Do you want that going?
Oh, we do, yeah.
Two hours.
I got the baby photos on everything. Let me show them to you on the screen.
I'm new at it. I'm not gonna do this. Is that cool?
There's a lot of stuff on there.
Oh, do you know? Yeah? My turn.
Are y'all set, Alex? I'm excited to see that.
Okay, we call the April fourteenth, twenty fifteen city council meeting to order. All council members present. Attorney. Attorney Ryan, uh, I mean.
Hey. I got some motion.
Engineer Ryan.
It's a demo.
Uh, we won't get into that. Uh, so some comments. Want to address the council? Those attending the important ceremony. Are there any additions or corrections to the agenda? We have a motion to adopt a janitor's permit. So moved.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Motion passed. Uh, consent of janitor. Do we have anything that needs to be removed from the consent agenda? Or do we have a motion to about that? Yes, yes.
I need to accept the consent agenda.
Second, Ed.
On favor?
Aye.
Motion passed. Now to the important part. Presentations, puppet hearings, et cetera. Ortho office for new canon police officer Amy Reddick. So then, hold on, you follow directions from me, okay? Ready?
Yep.
Raise your right hand. Read your oath of office, please.
I, Amy Reddick, to affirm the following. As an officer of the city of Kenyon, I will uphold the laws and the constitution for United States of America and the state of Minnesota and the ordinances of the city of Kenyon. I swear that I will diligently discharge all orders and direction of the present and future chief of police and the superior officers appointed over me according to the rules and regulations of this Kenyon Police Department. I further solemnly swear that I will also serve honestly and faithfully in the performance of my duties as a police officer, that I will conduct my personal life and ordinances with the same diligence as my personal life, and I will accept my commission as a symbol of authority and mark of service to the people of this community who help me out.
Very good. Congratulations. Off to the board.
Thank you.
Who wants cake?
I'll be back in a minute.
Yeah, I got a really good.
That's three kinds of trout.
Go in there. You stay in. Do you go to orders?
I think we're over it.
So, we move on to engineering. Update on feasibility work for a street construction project.
Very brief report this evening. Uh, if you recall from our report last month, the current activity was the televising of the sanitary sewer that was just being underway. Uh, they did get out and televise the sewer mains that they were able to access since our last meeting. Uh, we received a video of that televising last week. We're currently reviewing it to see what information it shows us and also to identify what homes uh, will we need, will need to contact to get access to televise the services from their homes back out through the mains. So we should have that information compiled fairly soon.
So basically, no more new information at this point.
Correct.
More information is coming shortly.
Correct. There'll be another phase of the televising to come once we get through the, uh, reaching the conclusions from this first phase that was completed.
Okay. Uh, preliminary review of tennis courts.
Thank you, Mayor. In your, uh, in your packet is a memo that we prepared on the tennis courts. There are, uh, some existing tennis courts located, uh, on the old school property. It's currently owned by the church. And we were asked to take a look at those courts, uh, and make a report back to the park and rec committee to see what kind of condition those tennis courts were in and what possibly might be a rehab in those tennis courts in a cost-effective manner so that they could be utilized in some fashion for the city. And we did review that with park committee last night. Uh, in, in short, our memo finds that due to the age and the condition of the courts, they really would need, uh, complete reconstruction in order to be usable again in, in any kind of relevant manner. So, uh, given that cost, that would be incurred for, to reconstruct those courts. Park's committee last night, I, I believe their, their action was to take the matter in advisement, um, rather than to move forward with spending that, that kind of money on those tennis courts. And instead, they wanted to do a survey of the community to try and determine what the, the needs are, what the interests are out there for recreational activities, be they tennis courts, basketball courts, those types of things. So, um, I think they were a little surprised at the cost of, of developing the courts. They were hoping that we'd be able to come up with a more cost-effective way to rehab the courts that were there since they already were in place, but, uh, just simply not the case due to their age and their condition.
Basically, he started all over again.
Correct, yep.
Well, we will see maybe something more unadded in the future and, uh...
Yeah, once the park and rec finishes their survey and determines what the interests are, uh, we'll have a chance to discuss what direction they might want to move.
Thank you, then. Legal. Update on Saint Mark, Missouri.
He submitted a building permit.
Yeah, he submitted his building permit. The county is reviewing it and he has to get his state plumbing permit.
Okay.
Um, I guess, uh, they called me, or when we called to check with Pam, contacted, uh, the county's, you know, zoning office, land use, Crewe County Land Use, they said that he needs to, um, complete the state plumbing permit and then he's gotta get that to them to review the plumbing plans or whatever. So, um, I'm gonna get ahold of him and see what's going on with that. He started that or whatever, but once that gets done, then yeah, he'll be able to get in there and finish up. So hopefully that won't take too long.
Yeah, and the only thing, we, we talked about it last meeting with the two different items we have here is the lease itself, which that still should continue on to be eliminated. That's, we had the hundred and twenty day notice, that's in June. This is the development agreement we're talking about here. And if he's complying, he's complying, he's doing what he's supposed to do, he's paid the fees. Uh, we can leave that in a holding pattern for right now and when we get to the point where either he does or he doesn't, we can still retroactively move on that while at the same time, the lease should be expiring in two months, basically.
Right. Assuming things go properly for him, he could well, uh, finish the construction and be ready to vacate that.
Absolutely, so I, it's just...
It might require another month's time to do his cleanup, which is part of the lease agreement also.
Yeah, exactly, so premature, but you may be dealing with it either next month or for sure in the June. To decide if there's anything else left to be done.
What's promising at this point?
Yeah, he's moved.
Uh, DNR Cooperative Fire Protection Agreement.
Uh, basically, this is just a renewal of an agreement that the city has had, has with the DNR and it allows us to get re-inbursed for grass fires. And it also allows, if resources are available to the DNR for, um, fire emergency events, um, it gives us, it gives them the ability to deploy them, um, in the city if need be. It's really more for the reimbursement part of the fire, um, when grass fires happen. So it's, it's basically just, uh, uh, a renewal of a, you know, of a long-term agreement with the city side with the DNR. So I don't see any issues with any of it.
No, it, it's very straightforward. The city's had these before and every once in a while, the state does this, but we need to put the city in there, not the fire department. That's something Mark can put in very easily and it doesn't even sign by you two or the chief can sign it too, but it really needs your signature to be official. But that's it, other than that, the agreement is pretty straightforward.
Similar to the cooperative snow removal.
Yes, yes, very similar.
So, do we have a motion to approve that? So moved.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Motion passed.
Who, Amanda Morrison? Thank you.
Um, old business, lawn mower purchase.
Um, there's two quotes that we received for lawn mowers. Um, it's a little different scenario than what we had in the fall, I guess, if you compare the two quotes. The first quote from Traxler has two commercial-grade tractor, or lawn mowers. Um, but the bottom line is seven, four, nine, one, five would be what, if we went with Toro, what we'd wanna go, what the city would wanna go with because of the engine. It's just heavier to be, um... And then, as far as SEMA, um, there's two quotes also from them for John Deere nine thirty, Z nine thirty M and Z nine thirty R. There's not a real big difference between these two except the R has hydraulic, has a hydraulic deck. Um, basically, I think the comparison here between these two quotes is between the nine thirty M and then the higher-end Toro. Now, based on that, the John Deere's actually less money by, you know, over ten percent. Um, there's some, if you look at the lower-priced John Deere and the higher-priced Toro, that's kinda what we'd be comparing from a standpoint. Because a lower-end Toro is not, I don't think would be, it would be wise for a long-term, you know, commercial-grade investment, I think we'd be better going with the, you know, the bigger engine with the, the higher model of the Toros. Though with the John Deere's, I think there isn't that much difference between them. I think we could go with the nine thirty M. And this is what I've gotten in talking to Steve and Wayne is here, um, tonight. Steve is at, uh, sewer, sewer training in Wilmer, so he's not able to come or he would've been there, so...
So, we've got nearly a fifteen hundred dollar difference for basically just the hydraulic deck?
It's hydraulic lift mechanism and we don't need it.
Well, that's...
The mowers we currently have now are manual lift, so...
Yeah, yeah, that's a lot of extra money for one feature.
The boat they sent in last fall was actually like a really loaded lawnmower and I didn't realize it was like that, but, um... The manual lift deck would be fine for the John Deere.
Wayne, are these pretty much apples to apples?
Yes.
John Deere with the Toro Toro.
Yeah, with the top Toro and the bottom John Deere. It's apples, it's, yeah, red or green.
So basically, that's what it is, the price difference.
Yes.
Yeah, I always like to see business get in town as much as possible, but there is a substantial difference there.
Yes, yeah.
And also a two-year difference in your warranty. Toro being five years, uh, John Deere three.
How many hours a year do you put on that, Wayne?
Oh, I can't exactly say 'cause usually, um, we're replacing the smaller mower. We put more hours on the big mower.
You think you put two, three hundred hours a year on?
I bet, I think so too. So I, I think the, the, uh, hours are probably just kinda key factor there. And both of them are the same, you know, we give five more, two more years on the Toro.
Which are you, leaning towards?
No, I'm not leaning, I just said there's two, you get two more years with the Toro. I just, I'm just stating a fact.
Yeah. But you can also look to where, uh, John Deere give a better trade-in than Toro did on their own mower. And from my experience, uh, buying older tractors, John Deere or whatever it was, where I've always found that John Deere had a much better trade-in value, was more in demand. Also was dealing with, uh, small lawn mowers. And hands down, the John Deere always turned a better resale value. And it seemed like, yeah, they cost a little bit more, but you had the value there. In the end, you can kinda look at it from two different ways. It's either, it, it's either quality or quantity. It generally cost you about the same in the end. I do think personally on the John Deere, that, um, from, uh, operator's standpoint, that it's a lot more creature comfort.
Yeah, it is a point.
And, and also, when it comes to the maintenance, um, generally speaking, uh, John Deere is far ahead than what the rest of them are. I know that is on their bigger equation.
There's certainly time to move on this.
Yeah, we need to be needed to do something.
I'm expecting to probably start mowing my lawn this weekend. I can get the scissors out. You may, sir.
Yeah, she wrote her already.
I paid the check though.
So, do we have consensus on this or someone ready to, uh, make a motion on one mower or the other? Which one, Fred?
Well, I think you kinda, kinda spoke pretty well of your points, you know, with the John Deere.
I just looked at both of them. I think it's just a shot, decided not going for it, but the whole is good.
I think, uh, Doc is talking with, uh, probably works there. They do have a preference.
Yes.
I guess they're the ones that gotta use it.
Were you looking at the R and the M?
The M, hydraulic lift is not worth fifteen hundred dollars.
We're fine with manual.
We, we got a, we got a young, strong man there, he can lift that deck. So I guess no one else?
So I think, okay, well, if, if that's what...
Yeah, the manual's fine.
On it, um... Did I make a motion that we purchased the twenty fifteen John Deere Z nine thirty M commercial?
I'll second. On favor?
Aye.
Close? We got a new mower coming.
Who did the second? I'm sorry.
I second.
Okay.
Um, yes, well, pool repairs. Same as last week painting, this is another bid on that, so we actually do have two bids now. Appears to me that the original bid is still preferable on the two.
Yeah, I would agree with that. I think that, um, this is something that we don't have to do this year. Um, I think we can get by with another year. We did the, the shower building. But I mean, this, and, and this is what I've got, what I got from Steve was that, you know, we don't have to do this this year, we could do it next year. You know, I, I don't, I mean, we'll have to, it can't wait though, more than another year. I'll say that, from what I remember at the end of the year last year.
We do have to think about keeping the expenses on pool. We didn't buy ones for any given year.
I know.
I mean, are we to go backwards though too much? If we don't do it this year, are we gonna have the bigger expense next year that we're not, we're gonna have to pay? More or...
I would, I would think that that would not change...
I don't think that's gonna be a huge deal.
Change in the cost of materials.
I mean, sandblasting might be a little more, but I don't think it's gonna be, um, materially, you know, more than a couple hundred dollars or it may be the same.
If it's still just a cosmetic thing at this point.
Well, it's, you know, the problem with this is, I mean, we, Paul, Steve and I before we went, we got these bids. I think our idea was that this was gonna be a lot less than this, but of course, we have a price pool painting. I have for probably eight years, ten years. But I, I was really surprised how expensive it was.
And that's bottom line would be, is there gonna be further deterioration of the surface underneath? If it's left for another year or...
Yeah, and that, I, I can't say, you know, what, how much more is gonna deteriorate in a year. I mean, I'm just going off of what Steve told me, so what his, you know, recommendation was.
Of course, I suppose another factor would be, would the filters stay cleaner longer with the paint on, uh, you know, surface better?
We had the, the one big sand filter rebuilt, basically. And they put in new sand gaskets and, you know, reseal this, so... So we've, we've put some money into that pool this year, I'll say that, because between the, the painting, the shower building and the, the sand filter, we've probably put twelve into it already. And I would say, if, if I knew, you know, reasonably well that we need to paint it, I would, I'd tell you we should paint it, but I, I don't, no, I mean, I can't say that for sure.
Mark, I got something. The, I think part of the bid was to resurface, to redo the, I'm not sure if it's concrete or plaster around the perimeter on the, on the deck of the pool, it's the orange. And that's deteriorating really bad.
Okay.
Um, so it's kind of like, um, you know, everybody's barefoot and they're walking over that. So it's a safety deal, that stuff should get addressed, but...
Okay.
I mean, if it goes a year for budgeting reasons, we could squeak it out, but it's, it's gonna have to get done. And then there is some minor repairs inside the pools. There's some, um, concrete's falling, but inside, on one of the little pools and in the big pool.
Okay. Well, I mean, we're gonna take it at capital. We've got money in capital, so that's not an issue. So I mean, we could do it this year.
The, the, uh, second bid here does mention sandblast coping around the pool. That's what you're referring to. Uh, the first bid, I didn't see that specifically laid out. Uh, sandblast, swimming pool, waiting pool, and training pool, clean-up grade prep surfaces, tank pool, waiting pool and training pool, and... That particular item isn't mentioned here. Uh, how, how long would we have to get further information before we too late to think about doing this yet this year?
Well, I guess the thing is, what we could do is, if we, if we're gonna paint the, paint the pool, we could take, um, the lower bid and if the lower bid does not include that, then go with the other bid. I mean, if you approve it. And if the low bid does include the deck, then, you know, we would go with the low bid. I think, I mean, based on the numbers we have...
Yeah, well, that's included as a separate item here on the higher bid. Sandblast coping around large pool at eight hundred and forty dollars. Or...
What if we just did that?
Uh...
I mean, that's part of the package deal.
That's why I was...
Well, they're gonna, they're gonna have to charge some mobilization for it.
Yeah, right.
They're coming from...
They're gonna be here, they're gonna charge more.
So...
They'll charge less than that if they're already here to do the big job.
Yeah. So I would say if we're gonna do that, we should do the whole thing and get over with.
Gentlemen, any opinions here? And over...
It's kinda tough to have an opinion.
We subsidize the pool.
We don't really know what, we gotta go by ex, or somebody else that's an expert in the pool. I don't know nothing about it, so I can't make a...
I just know that exposed concrete is going to deteriorate faster than if it's, uh, sealed up. How much in one year's time?
Well, I guess my thought is if the deck needs to be done, we should just do the whole, I mean, do the whole thing. If that's an issue. And I, I only go off of what, when you talk about experts, what was, you know, Steve. Um, and I talked to Roxy about it. She didn't say, okay, you know, I really think that you need to do it this spring.
She wasn't really concerned.
But she did say that, you know, definitely it needs to be painted and it probably can go, we probably could buy another year. Well, I'm never one to want to buy old things. I mean, if they need to be fixed, I tend to fix them, but this, I, I can't say how much more is gonna deteriorate in a year and maybe it's even harder for, for these guys if they look at some of the, you know, so...
For me, I, I prefer to maintain things when you can maintain and not let them go because they just deteriorate further. Uh, and I cannot imagine the prices coming down any in the next year.
No.
Um, so I guess, uh, the problem I have is some discrepancies between the two bids for things that are included in one and things that are not included in the other.
Not clear, not clearly a fair comparison.
Yeah, uh-huh, and, uh, I would prefer to go ahead with it, but, uh, get some clarification on the two bids so that we could at least compare apples to apples.
I certainly agree with that. If we could, uh, get some more information and make a firm decision at the next meeting, that would still...
Yeah, except I think they're gonna need to get in the report then, because I think by mid-May...
What if we, what if we let the staff get the bids and, uh...
Decide from there?
Decide from there.
Oh, what I would recommend you do is approve the low bid contingent on it being inclusive of both the pool and the deck, if that's the right way to put it. And then if it's not inclusive, then approve, I mean, in the motion, I would say then that you'd approve, we'd use the, the next, you know, commercial pool. Because if the low bid doesn't include that deck, it's gonna be more expensive.
Which is the low bid?
Um, commercial pool, it's low bid actually. They, they show less, lower than twenty-four thousand for everything. Uh, Olympic is just short of twenty thousand for the large pool, just over five thousand more for the waiting pools, so you're at twenty-five thousand right there. And then another eight hundred and forty for the coping. So you're getting in the, the center at twenty-six thousand.
Which is.
It's roughly two million dollars.
Twenty-five hundred, there, there are a lot of difference between the two. But it's not clear that they each cover exactly the same thing, Steve.
Yes, this one covers concrete repairs and this guy, from what I can see, commercial pools doesn't know anything about that.
Now, if you read the full line, concrete repairs or patching will be on a time and material basis.
Yes.
That's not part of the bid, that's in addition to.
I mean, and we don't know anything about these guys as far as concrete and clear.
They don't, they don't mention that possibility at all.
Right. Uh, and that's why I say I'm not sure which one is the cheaper.
It doesn't show you what kind of paint they were.
And Olympic doesn't mention the paint, no?
Yeah.
So it's, it's really hard to make a judgment of which of the two would be the better if we were to decide to go ahead and do it. And we hate to do, uh, special meetings, uh, wasting extra money there too in time.
So could they make some kind of motion to approve? You know, once we find out what an inclusive bid is of these two quotes, which one is the lower of the two?
Direct staff to select the most cost-effective of the two that gets rather.
Yeah, that's a little dicey, but I mean, who, and, and, and situation is you really don't know what each of these covers, but it, it can you give Mark enough latitude to look there over along with Joe? Probably, yeah, but you really don't come up with a hard and fast number, I think, and say, you know, not to exceed.
Not to exceed.
Exactly, let's go with this, and if it's something different than, uh, you know, I'd call it a special meeting, I guess, but if it's a timely thing, sure, I think you can go that. And if it is true that the one is the lower amount right now and that covers what you think it needs to cover, I think Mark's suggestion is probably correct, but with that, um, you know, or, you know, explanation not to exceed, but I'm just not sure, Joe, what this means by, you know, uh, the concrete work is not included, that, I mean, how much can they have left?
Well, excuse me, I think we can tell from the two bids is, what you can compare between two commercials is lower.
Yeah.
For the painting of the, of the large pool, the waiting pool and the key pool.
All right.
Um, the question is, when you add in the, the sandblasting or the coping or the deck, is there bids still lower than that? Um, I, I think either one, if we add, ask commercial about their concrete patching, it's gonna be time and material.
Yeah.
So the question is, what's the hour of the rate of each one and how many hours are we gonna have? I know Public Works had said there's some patching that needs to be done in the pool.
Yeah, I think some of the, the big problem might be, I think there's still snow covering some areas of the pool. So it might have been a shot in the dark, maybe. On the bidding.
And that's work that, that the city wouldn't do themselves, you want the contractor to do that as part of the contract.
Pretty specialized concrete work.
Mm-hmm.
You've gotten right, or the paint job is useless.
Yeah. So I, I think, maybe now that the, the snow is gone, I don't know if, if Public Works can, can, uh, estimate maybe what, you know, if it's ten hours worth of work or, or twenty hours worth of work or. Uh, for purposes of comparison of bid, you know, if you get the hourly rate of each of these firms.
Again, keep in mind these hourly bids are quotes.
Yeah.
Correct. I mean, so, so we're not bound by competitive bidding statute from the standpoint of, here's an exact number. Mark has the ability to negotiate. That's, that's really what can happen with these two. Um, and he clearly needs some negotiation because they don't manage at this point in time. So I, I think if you can come up with, yes, you know, you're, you know, we're looking for the lowest amount here. Uh, you know, I don't know what you would add in that would be in excess, because you're right, the other one's about two, two thousand more, at, at least on its face, but then you're not sure what the concrete marks. I mean, it's just a wild card.
Mm-hmm. Correct, but assuming the hourly rates of each one for their labor is, is comparable, uh, you know, really what you have to go by is, is that the price for the painting. So I think if, if Mark could get, we're supposed to pull the, to say what, what is the extra cost for that coping work if, if the cost is still lower for the coping plus the, the, at least then on the known quantity, you know, you've got the quote that's lower from commercial rather than.
Yeah.
And the time materials, it's gonna be the same amount of time regardless of which contractor does it, and assuming their hourly rates are comparable, that's, that's almost like a, you know.
I don't think, that's like a wash, because one of them is.
Correct.
So what, I guess what I would do is approve commercial pool.
Yeah.
And then I will try to get all this, um, of the concrete, obviously, I, I can't get a, uh, you know, I can't get a, probably just.
You're not getting a firm number.
But I can get an hourly rate from them. Um, but as far as the, and probably some idea of how many hours they think it would be, they'd come out, if they'd come out and look at it, but I mean, I think based on these two bids, their quotes, their commercial pool, you know, I think probably we're, we're fairly safe approving that one. And then if I find out from them, something jumps off that looks like it's gonna be a lot more, then I guess we're either gonna have to have a special meeting or, I don't know, else we could.
Can we set it not to exceed twenty-five thousand dollars?
Well, I, I would suggest that you approve the commercial pool quote, except they're a quote contingent upon with the addition of, of their price for the sandblasting or the coping around the large pool, that their total is still lower than the total of Olympic.
Okay.
Because, because we, we know what that number is if we add up all of Olympic's numbers.
Right.
And so if you can get a firm price from them for that quantity, if they're at that item, then, then, and it's still low, then I think, then I think you're good.
Okay.
And then, then I think it is just trying to get, get, figure out, yeah, how much work is there gonna be in the, in the concrete?
And then we should go out and look at that, now that it's almost melted, just so, I mean, you can kind of see everything in.
Sure.
So you, hopefully don't see anything else that was probably added, but shouldn't have to walk around there. Because the last time you bragged around there, there was two feet of snow sitting there.
Yeah.
Just, just let me clarify on one thing, though. Joe, we don't have an amount for what they're talking about concrete.
No, no.
No, that's why I think you have to have a not to exceed.
Yeah, if you put that in there.
You do, because you have to have an amount that's approved on that.
I can negotiate that with them and say.
Exactly.
Okay, here's what we have.
Yeah, and if it goes above that, then you gotta come back to the council.
If it doesn't work, then yeah.
But the amount has to be approved at some number, what's logical, I don't know what that is, to go over and above this, but it should have to be something.
I'm, I'm just thinking though, too, if, if commercial pool, pool comes back and says the sandblasting of the coping is the three thousand dollars, and now their number just for the painting and the sandblasting is above Olympic's, now they're not below current anymore.
Well, we've, we've already established that this isn't a do or die, it does not have to be done, we prefer to do it, but let's approve the commercial pool.
Ending clarification.
Ending clarification with a not to exceed twenty-five thousand dollars total. And if it's going to be more than that, then that requires further action by the council or delaying the project till next year. Is that?
Yeah.
Is that clear? Did that? So I guess I made that motion. Do we have a second?
I second that one.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Good, moving on. There you go, Mark. Update on Dugue County's solid waste plan.
Well, um, the solid waste ordinance has brought, I guess, ugly head again, um, for probably about the fourth time. But I guess mainly because there was a changeover on the county board, there's two new commissioners. Um, this concept of the countywide processing of solid waste at the Excel Energy Burner through the city of Red Wing has basically again resurrected itself and basically the, last year was three to two, um, not against the ordinance itself, but just against forcing the outlying cities to transport their waste there. Well, now, I don't, nobody knows this for sure, but it may have gone now the other way with the two new people. Uh, I think our commissioner, you know, Commissioner Rensical and, um, the commissioner in the new one that's in Bora and in South of Red Wing, um, Jason Maturis. I think those two probably have concerns or wouldn't support the, the idea of forcing all the cities to do that versus having it be optional. I think the biggest problem is there's no cost control or there's no way that we'll know. If we knew that there was gonna be some either input or, I guess it's more than input, but some cost control where we had some idea that, okay, they can't just set the price per ton, typically whatever they want to, but that, that doesn't exist and, and we repeatedly asked the city of Red Wing to, you know, or the county has to give us some indication of cost estimates, you know, what do they think it's gonna be now, five years, et cetera. And we've got little or no, no response from them. So the biggest problem, really, it's not the solid waste being hauled up there.
Yes.
It's, it's the uncertainty of what it's gonna cost. That's the bottom line. I mean, if we had some measure of, okay, it can only go up three percent a year or the cost of inflation, well, then we would know it's not gonna go up, you know, thirty percent in one shot, but we can't get that. So as a result, we're paying, and the problem is it's twenty years. This ordinance would be a twenty-year, uh, twenty-year ordinance. And so for twenty years.
Minimum twenty years.
There would be no, you know, there would be no control over that. So it's.
And what do we do now? Do we shop it around? Uh, okay, we can go here, dump here.
Well, it's up to waste management. They, uh, we can't, we have a three-year con, well, actually it was a five-year, but now there's a couple years left of that contract with waste management. And the city is the solid waste utility and then there, they pick up the waste. Uh, we bill it out with our utility bills and then we pay them whatever we collect minus whatever our small administrative fee is. Um, and most of their stuff goes west, probably, unless they truck some of it to us from like Iowa, which could be a possibility. But generally, it goes west.
Yeah, let's dump down in Iowa.
Oh, yeah, that's been going on for, between there and then Eau Claire is the other one. There's a big landfill there, and the tipping fees are so much less that they literally load semis and drive them both directions. At least they did in the past. I can't say what they're doing right now, but.
And what is the reasoning behind requiring us to go with Red Wing?
Well, because, okay, Red Wing, this is just a complicated issue, but basically, when this started in two thousand six and seven, Red Wing had a, had their own garbage burner, which now has been mothballed and shut down because it just wasn't feasible. It needed so many repairs and so much maintenance that it, it wasn't feasible to keep it running. So then what happened is Excel also has one in Red Wing. Probably the only city in the U.S. of that size that has two garbage burners. But what happened is the FPCA came in and said, okay, this is all predicated, and I should step back here, on that bench street landfill being accepted into this Minnesota Pollution Control Agency's closed landfill program. Now, that program was set up to take landfills and basically what happens is the county then has to pay a fee to close the landfill up and then kind of a, let's call it a performance bond. And it's based on the size of the landfill. In the case of the bench street landfill, that fee is about a million and a half dollars. Okay, and then what happens is that's closed up and then the state said they won't incur any um, future expense with the landfill if it bleaches or has issues and those kind of issues can cost this side of ten million dollars very quickly. So there's a lot of, you know, uncertainty with that. Okay, so that's kind of what the goal.
An insurance policy.
Right, so the Minnesota Pollution Control Agency then came in in two thousand six or seven and said, okay, we'll look at that, but what we want the county to do is pass an ordinance that says all waste is gonna be taken to Red Wing and burned in that burner. And, and so that's what started this and for, what, seven, eight years, that never was passed. But then last year it came up again, because what happened is the Red Wing got, or the county, because the county owns that landfill, um, except for a small portion that the city of Red Wing uses to dump potash, you know, or the remnants of that solid waste burner. Um, basically, they came back, the solid, the landfill program was closed by the legislature several years ago. But they got special legislation to allow the bench street landfill into the program. But again, it's predicated even more so now I'm getting that, something, getting that solid waste ordinance passed. Okay, and, and so this in theory isn't, you know, I, I, I think is a noble idea, but the problem is Pudhue County, the way it's configured, you got some outlying cities that are way out from Red Wing. You've got Canyon, you've got Pine Island, um, you've got even, you know, Wanamango that are a long ways away, so to truck that up there is gonna be expensive. And our haulers, under their current rates they're charging, aren't, that's not gonna work very well for them.
Yeah.
Okay, and so then, you know, the.
What is the intention of all of this?
Well, the intention.
Why, why are enough to keep the?
To keep the Excel Energy Burner going. And then also the Minnesota Pollution Control Agency, I believe the city of Red Wing is gonna get a substantial brand to pay for a, a thing that cuts off.
Shredder.
Shredder. The, for a shredder. And that's part of this too, is they need enough waste to pay, to cover the cost of that. And so between the two of them, that's what forces all of the waste to go up there, or the Minnesota Pollution Control Agency wanting this ordinance to be passed. So the, the problem is, on one hand, if the county doesn't do this and that bench street landfill doesn't get in the program, county taxpayers could get hung for tens of millions, ten to fifteen million dollars. They could. But then on the other hand, we sit here and now all of a sudden, we're mandated that all our waste goes up there. And right now, maybe it's not gonna be that much more than what we're paying now. But what's gonna happen in five or ten years? We have absolutely no safeguards that it won't go up fifty percent or more, or, you know, whatever. There's no safeguard. We have no control of that. Now, the other problem, at some point, this ordinance went from all solid waste in the county to now cities in the county.
Correct.
Which now is even gonna compound this worse because now, I mean, I assume if you look at like waste management and other haulers, they have to pick up outside the city also to be profitable. And if they pick up in the city and it's mandated to go Red Wing and they pick up outside the city, a lot of that waste is still gonna go up there.
Yeah.
They're not gonna have one truck be in town and one truck be out of town. It's, it's very difficult to measure how much will be just city and how much will be county, but I think on principle, this is terrible, terrible. To say, okay, again, all the city taxpayers are gonna get stuck with this whole bill, but everybody in the, now in the townships and the borough areas, well, they don't have to pay for it. That's ridiculous. I'm sorry. I mean, if they're gonna do the whole county, they need to do the whole county, not just the cities. I don't know where, where, when that was taken out or when that was changed, but. So, so there's, there's a couple of layers of this that are very problematic, very problematic.
Well, the city could get by by just dumping their, uh, waste outside the city limits.
Yeah, I don't think so.
Well, you know, you have laws like this and that's the sort of thing that happens.
Mark, was there any discussion on, uh, let's say for being Canyon and so far out of the realm of Red Wing that they would kind of water level it out as for transportation fees and tipping fees?
Yeah, there, that, what, see, what happened last year when this came up, there, at the last minute, when the, there was an ordinance and then, or I mean, a resolution, then the ordinance would have followed it. But the ordinance was never passed, I believe that's kind of how that went. But the resolution, the originally, last year said all the waste has to go to the, to Red Wing, but it was changed so that all the waste west of fifty-two, it was optional. That was changed.
Yeah, I remember, uh, that part of it, but let's say.
Then that's not so bad for us, or, you know, Pine Island or any of the cities, but now our concern is that's if they come back and get changed back again.
So if the bill comes back, let's say if you live within the city of Red Wing and they pay, uh, I'm just using this for an example, um, five dollars a mile to transport their garbage. and they pay, I'm just using this for an example, um, five dollars a mile to transport their garbage, up here, we would have like twenty-five dollars. If they leveled it off so it was a play, a level playing field for all the way across the county, each city, and that, was there any discussion on that?
No, what, the, the discussion has been, when you talk about the numbers, has been more of, you know, is there a way that we can either shorten this up, like in five-year increments, or that we can have some, um, and I, it's more than input, but I mean, some control, like a, a separate board would be set up that would set the rates, and we'd have representatives on there. There was a solid waste advisory board in the mid-two thousands, and I was on that board, that's why I guess I know too much, or know so much about this. And that board was basically dissolved by the county, they, they got rid of it, because it was, it was like a thorough circus at the end, you had, you know, the city reps, and I think we were pretty level-headed with everything. And then you had, of course, Red Wing, and then you had the MPCA, and then you had solid waste haulers, and you had some environmental group or groups on there, so I mean, it was interesting, I'll say that, those meetings were, were very interesting. They went on for like hours, three, four hours of time, but now, but the county board ended up getting rid of it. But, but the problem now is, we brought that up again, and there's been kind of a mixed reaction to that, I mean, you know, I think Dan would support it, um, and I think last summer, there was a couple other commissioners that might've supported that, but, um, that hasn't gone anywhere. But that's one of the possible things, that if there was an independent board that has some authority to set these rates, and we had input with it, that would be a lot better scenario for us long-term, but I don't see that happening the way this is going right now, I, I don't, I don't see that. I know Red Wing doesn't want it, and I've just been really disappointed at the lack of transparency with this whole thing, so I just, um, I don't know, I mean, you know, I don't wanna say it's a cover-up or anything like that, but I, I don't ever talk in terms like that, but I just don't, I don't get it, you know?
Maybe this is one of those times to just sit down and kinda ignore it a little bit?
Well, there's not a way to do right now, anyway, except I just want you guys to be aware of this.
Yeah, absolutely.
Because this may just go, get passed, and there's not much we can do about it. And if the MPCA gets their way, the city of Red Wing gets their way, um, that's what will happen. And normally, Red Wing and the county, then, that's not like a lockstep deal, usually there's more of this going on, on things than, than not. But for whatever reason now, this is, you know, the Red Wing commissioners are behind it, and I understand the whole risk factor with the landfill, and I think I feel more concerned about that than some of the other people from some of the other cities around here, when we've, and Mike's been in some of these meetings, but, but that does concern me a lot, I don't wanna just go in and let that go either, you know, but, anyway, so... But this is mainly, um, you have a history in the packet, um, that Dan put together, Dan Rensical, and then you also have my memo from last year, so I think that's probably quite a bit of information there, but I just want the council to be aware that that might be coming up again, so...
Okay. He's been involved in this a lot longer than I, and I've already heard way more of this than I want to, and there's still no good resolution in sight. Unfortunately, we can't sit up here and name names of who and how we feel about the ride of this, but... But we can consider the possible purchase of a twenty-fifteen-one ton truck we dumped off from Public Works.
So, um, we now have quotes from, well, the same quotes we had last month, but, um, we got a revised quote from Milo Peterson Ford, and so it's pretty competitive, I mean, they're all fairly close. Um, I guess my recommendation would be to try to stay local when we make this purchase, and between Milo Peterson's two quotes, um, I think we'd be better off ordering the, the new, the twenty-sixteen, because it would have, that quote has power package, which I think...
Says here, it does not.
It does have, it does have.
Okay, so that's a typo, then?
Yeah, do you look back in the...
Okay, I didn't.
Oh, if that's what I wrote, that's a typo, if I said that, um... But then, I think, um, if you look at the, and I've had some chance to look at the trucks, and give this some more consideration, and talk to the street department guys, I think that it's probably important that we have, with the different drivers we have, that they're able to operate the windows and the mirrors without having to get out or move over, and so... I mean, can they get by with, oh, yeah, they could, but I just think it would be worth that. Um, we're not really trying to spec a lot of extra stuff on these trucks, but I think that's something that we should. And I think if you look at just the benefit of having both maintenance and all that stuff, I think...
Yes, absolutely.
You know, that'd make more sense, even if it's a little bit more expensive to go forward, so...
No, I would, I would think more if we go ahead and, uh, Paul, get that, that newer truck on its way to us. For a better time to get it equipped and ready to go for next winter, it's time to start on it now.
Well, I think it's a good time now, cause I think as we approach the fall, it's, it's either tighter supply or more expensive than both.
I'll second that motion.
On favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Never spend that money.
Oh boy, I know, it's your record.
New business, license renewal for Canyon Concrete Club. No new information, anything, just renewal. Motion to approve that license renewal.
So, second?
On favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Approve acquaintance to Historic Preservation Committee. Mary Fitz and myself, and one more person that I hope corral and have ready for...
Yeah, we still need, um, another member of the Historic Preservation Commission. So, if there's anybody in the community that's interested, this would be a good time to just come and talk to me or Mike or whatever, and we still, we had one opening on it for quite a while, so...
Were you to move Mary and... I'll make that motion, uh, to approve. Mary G. Fitz.
Second?
On favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Incidentally, I understand that she's in, um, hospital, I believe, is that right?
Oh, it's her.
Is that correct? Mary?
Yeah.
Oh, that wasn't... Well, let's all thank Good Thought for returning very quickly. Approve Canyon Senior Living five K Fun Run Walk. Estimating a hundred participants in the event. I haven't heard anything with that.
Go move.
I'll second. On favor?
Aye.
You should put in that motion on route, cause that's basically what the council's approving us to route.
Yes. Resolution, two thousand fifteen dash zero five, resolution in opposition of a potential...